Joining one and after, so we're going to call this meeting to order. You will please. You release this. Next is public comments. Do we have any sort of public comments? Next people.
We. Read up on the notice to be not be able to attend today.
Okay.
And if there are any questions, she'll be happy to get back to us.
I can hear any questions on the front of board.
Andrew, they're gonna have Latina voices September thirtieth.
Sounds good. Also wanted to recognize the fact that it sounded like they're uh they're doing really well compared to.
Oh, yeah, the. And they've started doing something different than when I was on the board and they're getting a lot of sponsors to sponsor them. Which is really nice.
I think it shows, I mean. From almost a four hundred dollar investment up to thirty six, thirty seven hundred dollars. But those book and book sales really helped you. All right, next is the foundation report, Mr. James.
Questions for the bottom of the board?
Waiting for my motor.
Um, so uh segue, nice segue, bunch of shifts. Uh, we just. Asked week before last, uh, pressed a thousand dollars in sponsorships for nine of the libraries. And sponsorship efforts are going well. Uh, we also are starting to see some folks purchasing tickets, so that's. Sign to, um, that was largely in response to, um, save the date card postcard that went out as well. As uh an email goes out to our distribution. So I'm kind of feeling feeling a lot better about that in terms of. Um, us being able to operate and lack of pushers of business, uh, that encouraging for sure. Uh, and we also, uh, learned there, you'll see on this report. In this month's packet that we submitted a grant application to the K Foundation. Or that we did, we did that grant. Uh, it's similar but smaller, uh, similar to Grant Revere, he had ten rows, all respect. It's kind of a walk through the roof, but it's got in library application. It's about seventy five hundred in cash, about fifteen hundred in contributing case of services, so. Yeah.
A quick question about the fund, the fundraiser, the library. Are those dollars going to do specific programming? Systems. Shows. All right. Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. James?
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the financial report, Mr. Green.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Uh, so you can see, um, C K L is the whole, we're on track, a little bit on revenues. Um, I've heard. Five thousand dollar positive bearings. Be good. Uh. Our expenses are coming in similar to last month. Uh, again, I'm I'm working on branding. I got a little program at this time, but dug the man against the budget. And getting ready for that and finishing out the audit, which is very, very close. Uh, so I hope to have that, um, printed out over three years average by the. Budget numbers to see if I can. Good as a general fund, um, revenue work looks. Almost exactly the same. The intergovernmental and designated funds, so negative, uh, then designated funds. Most of that is grant money, so if we're seeing higher expenses in the expenditures, um. Should mean that there's there's matching revenue up in the revenue lines of. That. Uh, intergovernmental, um, I believe the actual expenses are correct on that, so that's. Probably, uh, some of that's due to three shop and numbers around between finance and your governmental and the. Uh, self insurance fund, so getting that out, but again, uh, I checked the actuals and and they're they're good. Breaking this down by group. Um. Again, the interdepartmental and designated ones are showing negative. The only other one that shows a negative, uh, and I did some research on this one this time. Cause it had grown just a little bit, the South, Southeast region. That's actually a budget entry that hadn't been, um, transferred over, um. They had another person transferred to their into their group who was not initially a budget for revision that happened in April. And normally what happens all that is we get a budget transfer from wherever that person came from over to. So they'd actually be in the black. Uh, facility spending, um. Uh, capital fund on facilities is, uh. Picked up some in this last month and it'll it'll continue to do that as the expenses for the. Um, twenty one C, uh. A turf conversion comes through and and then some other projects that Gary's been able to pick off. And some months I think probably it's a few more things in. Uh, and not because of the school districts, picking up some of the contractors that we can't get our hands off those. Not available. Um. I T is, um. I just, I I actually saw a bunch of. EOs go through this month for new equipment. Refocus, basically replacing stuff that they're retiring, so they're no, we should actually start to find this thing. So insurance fund, uh, track tracking quite well. Numbers of health, you'll see this, we get to the audit or any number for expenditures on the insurance. Uh, sign the health fund is two point one billion dollars. We originally budgeted two point four, but the pace we were going, I I actually need money over to it. So that'll probably help us start getting fun balance this year. Um, but we're seeing similar, um, trends, I think in the beginning of this year, we're supposed to be having the. Moody, who is our broker. To talk about. Six months into this year, but from the spending I'm seeing going through our insurance account, it looks like that's down from last year, so. Hopefully it's gonna turn that way. Rest of the year. And then there there are no budget reconciliation, um, entries to talk about.
Public services report. Yeah, was there a question? Was there a question for me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, next is the public services reports, the sales.
Any questions about the public service report?
Are the. Numbers in collection kind of down because of the number of hours that we're. Open, I mean, cause we're not open as long as we used to be, or is that? Is that just a trend that we have?
It is national, it's fine. Also, I just had a conversation, um, with Jenny Colley in collection management today. Um, in preparation of changing the look of that report coming up. And, um, the the door counts are up, but the circulation numbers are not helping. That is not only happening to us, but that's. And that seems to be a library. Oh, no. Yeah.
That's interesting.
So just a couple of things to point out, we had a month in in June, adult ed. Made their measurable scale gain, so we're very excited. It tends to be a nail biter, so we were happy about that. Um, but we also hosted, um. The Peggy Shivers portrait unveiled. We did the, uh, homeschool curriculum swap. Regional history and genealogy pulled off another successful symposium this year. And the book cart drill team performed at the switchback scheme. Lots of cool things going on, folks, services.
Assuming this will be in next month since this that was a this month activity, but I have a lot of really positive feedback. On the flow that was in the on the fourth of July parade.
Oh, good.
So had several people, I think, told me, once they appreciated seeing it there and how. They liked it was a really strong patriotic feel, so. Just thought I would pass it along.
And I understand with that also at the at the after event, the street fair, they spoke to several hundred people.
I was just gonna say, we walked by the booth and I mean, they had so much stuff. My kids, my kids walked away with bags, you know, with things and like they were so excited and they kept saying, yeah, my mom works for the.
Thank you. I'll be sure to pass that along.
I do have a question to me. I don't know if this is yours. What, but culture pass? Are we keeping stats online on the number?
Denise, culture cats.
Yes. But are we keeping?
Yes.
Can we include next for next months in report?
Yeah. We could.
Okay. I think that would be a great thing, cause I know that we've. Done a lot of advertising of that and talking about that, so I was just. Over actually you did.
Okay. I'll work with Denise in that one of our reports.
Okay, that's fine. And it's fine if you want to wait in the. Thank you.
I think it's just awesome that there's so much communication out the public schools and others. I mean, homeschool and. Then, uh, some of our charters and there's just such great communication. I'm just so excited.
That's a whole team of people.
I know.
Children's Services.
So I mean, there's just a lot of good work going on around with kiddos. And teachers.
So. I'm sorry to interrupt, but Jeremiah just came over is that on page thirty three. We have the culture pass stats, yes, which would be part of basis communications.
There we have.
Okay, and that's just the June, right? That's, it's just as June. But can we get it? Since we started off, was June the first month? It's like we did it back in the days.
I don't believe so, um. Denise? Let me ask.
No biggie, but if if we could also.
June is the June number for June.
Well, is it? Is that? Yeah.
They are. It's just for you.
Okay.
Just for June.
Yeah, if we could. I guess do a run in total a month, if you hear me, yeah. And even if we can, and I know that this is adding. But if we could add it to.
Do you want to add it to the stats or like that?
Yeah. It's different because those those are circulation words.
We're going to change the format of that, so we're also going to include door counts and stuff to be easier visually. So we can talk about it and adding it to that. Yeah, so then it will it will be easy, like, you know, just instead of just being buried. Information, so. We've been doing it, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Tron.
The year of the nature. Um. All of last year.
Okay. But a- again, it would still be a good idea to see a month a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put in a format that it would be easier, Jesse and Spirit.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the support services or the public services report?
I did want to say something. I was just thinking about this as I was reading. I read it earlier and thought about it and then wanted to come back to it. Um, I don't think I saw anybody else at the switchback scheme, right? I mean, I sat next to, I sat with you, I met four members. I saw you, yes.
Good bad about missing those steps.
It was just a great night. Like, I just want to say it was a great thing. I know Denise had a big hand in that. It was awesome. We had so much fun. I was looking at this picture. I can see Heather up front. I can't see us here, but it's probably because my kids were running over to get all the free, uh, swords, you know. Horses, uh, but we had a great time and it was a great thing and I'd love to go again next year and I would say encourage you all to try it out next year if you can.
I won't show up next year.
Okay, I I reread that paragraph and I want to make sure because I don't see, did we? Do any library cards that night?
Yes, 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 at that.
Exactly, so that's specifically.
Yes, yes, we had a deal. Yes, I even got some texts from people there who like I didn't know they were there. I'm like, hey, my child got a car to the library park and you know, but yes.
It was, it was very cool. They showed the video for PPLD on the big screen. I couldn't see where we're sitting, but, um. They showed the thing and if you look at the picture, they had a big, um, Denise had a big sign cut up behind us and said like, you know, but PPLD.
Also, public services report. I want to, yeah, um, over here. Hey, Gary. Um, did I miss, um, or maybe I didn't see it, um, because apparently I missed all the stats that were in there as well. Um, but was there any mention of the new mo- mobile library vehicle that we approved earlier? Like, what's the status on it?
Um, it's except for health. Well, it'll be.
So we won't see it until maybe early next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So. I I can, got nothing on that. Um, the the vehicle has been purchased and is sitting at the facility.
Okay, great. So is it eighteen months from now or is it?
I don't know. I don't know that I heard the term today, so I. But I know it is.
Right, thanks. I I'm pretty sure that that's all. Yeah.
Just take a moment, go back.
Are there any, um, questions or comments on these support services reports? Other than Wisconsin. You want to make sure you understand, we're not attacking you, we're trying to make sure that share of your questions are on good.
So one other thing coming up on September. Now Carmel Veteran Service Center has a. A Veterans Appreciation Day. And the library is going to have mobile service there like we did last year. It's a great opportunity to also issue library cards. And let people know what the library is all about if you don't know about it. So it's a great opportunity to. Just public, you know, publications and publicity and that kind of thing, so it's. And they're in a parking lot and there's a variety of things around the area for people to see and do and whatnot, so. They really appreciate it last.
Support services. All right, moving on to the T five bearing reports.
Okay, so this is especially my first day back to work from vacation, so I'm trying to remember what I did before I left. Yes, that's it. Yeah. So the good thing is I can talk about future. I have some meetings scheduled. I know that Denise, Randy and I will be meeting. And also Natalie Johnson reached out to me while I was, um, on vacation, so I have a meeting scheduled with her, with the county administrator. And also Laura made sure that my calendar is busy when it comes to different meetings. But I also want to take this opportunity and thank Tammy, um, and Randy and Kim, um, I know that and if I'm missing anyone, please, uh, forgive me. That you put together presentation whether work session worked together regarding the major springs library, so it was greatly appreciated. And I want to thank, um, also Gary for putting together the interview questions for, uh, our, you know, for not RFP, but actually to choose, uh, the vendor. For our facilities master plan. I remember that. We had interviews before my vacation, so, um, and I believe that also. Uh, Gary presented that, uh, what the committee, uh, recommends, uh, going forward. So, yes, so I, that's. That's it for now and, uh, today. Also Tammy managed to make sure that I had a formal meeting with her, Heather and Denise and Randy. So, hey, I'm still standing.
Any questions on the. We got a board reports, governance committee reports. All right, so we did meet, our special meeting last week. And we talked, uh, about the board vacancy. Um, and sorry, work session, not in especially. This is, sorry, work session. I'll make sure nobody thinks that we haven't taken a vote while we were, so. Work session, my apologies. Um, so, yeah, we we met, uh, we talked about the board vacancy. I had sent out, uh, emails to our liaisons from both the city. As well as the commissioners and included the timeline. Laura, thank you for putting that together. Um, I did not put specific dates. Uh, I just put the months down because obviously that can change. With the drop of that, um, but we are trying to, uh, have a new member. Um, or if Dr. Stola is reappointed, um, by the first of January or the first meeting in January. Um, so we have already, uh, Laura sent out the competency surveys. Hopefully all of you got them and either replied or. Brought them tonight, but if you did not, please do so. I'm not gonna point anybody out because I honestly didn't get it and you didn't. Um, besides that, uh, we also discussed, um, Mina, uh, Mina's recognition. Um. Schedules are outrageously hard to put together, so what we've decided to do is is we're just gonna. Unfortunately not be able to provide her with a celebration, um, because we'll be going into August, possibly even September. And I don't want to keep hounding her, um. She might have some things to say to me about me doing that, so I think what we're gonna do is is just reach out to her and I'll set up a time to meet her. And give her, um, the, uh, resolution that we're going to be discussing later on. And anything else that, um, the board members we provided for, uh, we're giving her a gift card as well as, uh, flowers. Uh, for her service, so if anybody else, any of the other organizations I know. Um, Rita's not here, but if, uh, you had anything, then, um, I'll touch base with you. Um, let me see, what else did I, we talked about, uh, email communication, um, please. Use your PPLD email account. Um. We're gonna stop sending emails to personal emails. Um, we're gonna start using the PPLD emails. Um, the reason for that is obviously Quora. Um, it's a lot easier for core requests if they come in for specific emails. Um, that relate to a specific topic. It's a lot easier to do that. Um, so we're gonna just start using PPLD emails. If you haven't set that up or if you're having issues with it. I'm sure our our good friend Justin would be able to pull you out, um, and get that fixed. Um, but that's what we're gonna, I think we're gonna start doing that. I think we're gonna do that pretty quick if we're not doing it already. Uh, oh, and then one more thing, we did talk about the. Board retreat, uh, we talked about some topics. We're still working through that. We'll get a board retreat agenda. Put together by the next committee meeting for August, as well as discussing it with everybody, um, in the August meeting, board meeting. That retreat is scheduled for the eighth September. Um, from nine, and these times are kind of. Uh, tentative right now, nine to four. The date is solid, but the times might be a little, we might be at nine thirty and and to three. We just haven't worked out those times. That's gonna be at the carriage house. Pretty hefty meeting and you got done in. Pretty quick, pretty good time, we started the. All right, that's it. Thank you, um. Internal Affairs Committee.
It's me, um. We, uh, reviewed the three items that are coming up this is tonight, the facilities master plan, um. Consultant Gary did a great job on that and, um, you'll see that shortly. Um, we looked at the library, uh, card policy revision. It was just a small little, just a few little tweaks. Um, that you'll see the final draft of, and then we looked at the nepotism policy, which I think you have, we have an email on other kind of.
Yeah.
You'll go to that, yeah.
Uh, as we get down.
Perfect. Yeah, that was it.
Any questions? All right. Uh, next is our liaison comments. I know we have, uh, Councilwoman Hingdom and Councilwoman Crowe Iverson on. You, either of you have anything you would like to say?
I don't. This is one that Crowe Iverson, I don't have any comments. It's just my board, first board meeting, so I am just, um. Taking it all in. Thank you.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for coming in. Miss Hingdom?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I, I would only have one thing to say, and that is, um. Uh, that City Council will be, uh, having a retreat with the mayor in August, um, just share that news. Um, I don't think there's much other specific news I have to share, except, uh, really enjoying all four new council members and I think our. City Council is very and Board of Utilities, which is where, uh, Lynette and I were earlier. Uh, September, and so I, for those of you who don't know, we have, um, Board of Directors for Utilities that happen immediately prior this meeting. Um, on a, you know, every, on a monthly basis, so there are times when, uh, we may run over and not be able to join or might make our ability to attend. In person a little challenging, um, so just want you all to know that and, uh. And I guess that's all for now, but, um, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here, attending as well. Um, I will just put this out for both of you. If you have something that you would like to pass along and you're gonna. Expect a late meeting with utilities, you're welcome to send something ahead of time, uh, that we can include in the board packet or read at the meetings. If you have something to pass along. Uh, please feel free to send it to either Laura or Tiana and, uh, they'll get it to us as the board, but we appreciate, uh. You both in your service and appreciate.
Thanks. And also, actually, Jeremiah, we we did receive your email notifying us of the, uh, uh, the open. Opening on the board and I'm sure we will, um, be responsive to that when the time is right. Thanks.
Okay, next trustee comment.
Well, since we were, uh, praising the mobile library appearances, today I was at the Space Foundation Discovery Center Museum. And, um, it was PPL day and then you showed your library card you got in half price. And I had a lot of out out of town relatives with me for the museum and so, um. The mobile library people were very, um, to give everyone a tour. Of the book will be open. Explain how wonderful our library was and they were very impressed, so I appreciate that.
That's great. Yeah, um, I met with, uh. Heather and her team, um, between meetings, actually it's the day after our last board meeting, so. Um, it was nice to reintroduce myself to her, her team and everything and, um. Talked a lot about HR stuff.
That was your adoptive trustee.
It's just your. It's great. Anyone else?
Well, while while we're at the Rockford Library. Since it's one of my, um. Adopted trustee branches and is my personal. That, uh, welcome to all of you to my hood and uh. This is the best branch of the library, just like.
Yeah, I was gonna thank. Steve and the rest of the staff for letting us come and be here tonight, uh, I really enjoyed these board meetings, not. At Penrose, week after, or month after, month after, month after, you know, see the other branches and see everyone else in the community, so. Uh, thank you for your hospitality and let us. Let us be here.
So, you know, we talked about the, the area, the flooding, how about the, what, what results and how that looked out?
Yes, it's, um, it's about the flooding, Gary, and how we resolved everything here, so.
And the rain today wasn't a problem?
We get a little nervous, whatever. Okay, so I, I gotta ask since, since Debbie and our doctor still brought it up, um, are there any? Changes that could be done to fix problems like that, so that we're not. Worried about it every time it rains, yes. I mean, I know that this is a leased building. Some. That, that field got back when you just got down. Last one. Okay. Alright, I was advised it might have Commissioner Gonzalez on the line and he might have something to say, so I apologize for skipping you earlier, uh. Is there any comments that you'd like to make, sir? Let us know if that changes, uh, we'll move on to you, go ahead. Be just a meeting.
A little noise.
Are you there? Sir. Commissioner Gonzalez, you're unmuted.
Oh yeah, am I unmuted?
There you go, got you now.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, uh, yeah, no, I just wanted to thank everybody, that Peggy Shivers event was outstanding. I know it was commented on earlier, but uh, I, I thought you guys did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here and attending as well, listening in. Appreciate your support.
Thanks.
Alright, next is the correspondence and presentations, we have a letter from Children's eleven superintendent. Uh, Michael Gall, it's in your packets. Saw that. So. Which everyone saw the, the letter from. Superintendent Gall, um. In the service of our. Our librarians and staff, so. Uh. Going back to this Gonzalez's point about reaching out to school districts, uh, the school districts appreciate that relationship and that communications. Alright, next we're moving on to item six, our business items. Um, discussed last time. We're on, so we're to decision twenty-three dash seven dash one, facilities master plan consultant. I think you need to read the rest of the. Well. I mean, if he, if we're just asking to approve the plan. Then, well, removing the, the choice from the consulting, uh, RFP, he don't have a contract to working on yet, is that correct? No, and, and. And then, you know, any negotiations, it's similar to what we did with the, uh. The turf converting and uh, let me see, we, you know, based it there in. And negotiated added items and up to the budget of, so. And it would be similar to in this situation. Proven to two ninety-six. Thousand dollars for the, the development of the plan and then would give a contract. Where to negotiate the final price would be up to that amount. Higher. So, do we have a motion to approve a, in a architecture planning to provide the. Um, the facilities master plan consulting services. Uh, not to exceed the amount of two hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars eighty-three cents. Second, second. Uh, any discussions? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Gary. Uh, next is decision twenty-three dash seven dash two, library card policy revision. We have a motion to approve the library card policy revision to.
I mean, we approve the library card policy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? What is the change?
It was really just some, um. Some, I believe, comments, she didn't dance down, but maybe Tammy can speak better.
Basically, and I have a copy here on my laptop if you wanna see it, but really, we had a lot of. Extra language in there about, you know, how we work with different things. L C and things like that, and so we just totally really pared that down and really got to the. The core information that really just is around the library card and the procedures, policy and procedures that improves for them. We have all the extra language that sometimes we have added.
You said, or she said that they clarify uh, the types of cards a little bit better.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's all in the. It wasn't the policy per se, but the, the procedures is what was resigned, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can I ask you a question, CLC's card? Is there a way that we could include the link to the C L C? Libraries that are included in that program? Unless we have it already, I mean, I've seen that list. Well, okay, so we specifically call out the C L C card and what it does. But it sure would be nice to have. A link to the actual libraries that are included in that.
Okay, we can make the title of paragraph be that as the link.
Just to say, Jerry. Any other questions or? Thoughts on the library part? Alright, um, on favor, say hi. Any opposed? Motion carries? Uh, next is decision twenty-three dash seven dash three. Uh, nepotism policy, there's a motion to approve the nepotism policy of business.
Hopefully, nepotism policy as presented.
Alright, so, um, in our discussion. The Internal Affairs Committee, I brought up sort of this top board policy piece. Um, we talked, it initially just said it is possible with library districts that family lepers of their employees or individuals in a dating relationship. May be eligible for employment at the library, and that's where I said, I think that's great, but we need to have something a little bit. Stronger, not, I mean, the fact that a right to gain a relationship is great, but it's not really board policy. And then I think we need to put a little bit more restrictions around that, you know, we don't want public display of affection and. People getting frisked in front of both patrons or even in staff. So I asked Heather, um, to make some revisions, just Laura. Um, and so you have this revision down here that references the personal conduct policy, um. As Heather and I went back and forth a little bit, there wasn't anything specifically talking about, um. PDA or any sort of a public display in public areas. Um, and so that email that you have sitting in front of you adds, uh, with this bullet point down at the bottom of the front. Since employees are strictly prohibited from engaging in physical contact, that would in any way be deemed inappropriate in the workplace by a reasonable person. While anywhere on PPLD premises, whether during work hours or not, this is coming directly from, uh, SHRM, which is a national H R. Brand, um, so. My proposal would be to amend the current policy to add. This paragraph at the end of the board policy.
So, so it would be the. The PDA piece would be a board policy, not a administrative procedure.
That was just, that, that was where I was gonna slide it, if we wanna put it in the administrative policy, I'm fine with that too. I just wanna make sure that statements put into the policy.
Sure, I just wanted to.
I think we should change that policy to procedure. Administrator, procedure.
The, this component?
No, the.
Oh.
As well.
Procedure for the policy, yeah.
So we're putting that down underneath the administrative section.
No, he said.
If you don't, not that picky about it.
Can you come your rationale for wanting it? To me, it just sounds like it administrative thing, so.
That's fine, uh, my thought was, we typically talk about adjusting the board policy and not the procedure, so for us to slide something in. Would be within our purview of the board policy and I was the procedure, that was my rationale. Um, but we can amend the document, have a. We can direct administration to. To consider revisions if we would rather do that, but that was, I think. Based off of my conversations, I mean, we would like to edit this document to include that paragraph would be, uh. Really taken.
Could that paragraph be included in the personal, uh, personal conduct policy six hundred? Could that be in there or does, does it have to be in this document? Could it be? Could it be included in that?
Well, if you're saying that there isn't anything in personal conduct policy that this is. Public display of affection currently, so. Um, the assumption be that that would be related to nepotism, that there's some kind of relationship there, but you know, we can.
Actually, I'm glad you had me just putting it in the personal conduct policy, um, because. Whether it's considered nepotism or not, you know. So, like, uh, there was proposal here, so.
It seems like that's the word.
Yeah, this policy is presented and then. Sounds good. Can I make another suggestion? We put links to the personal conduct policy six hundred on. Well, I mean, if I'm referencing separate, separate documents, we should probably include the links to them.
So it is all the same running documents?
Is this, this, this is a section of the existing document?
And then the rest of it's running down, so. And so then each one in the table contents, passing policy and we put it in the straight.
Okay.
So it is easy to find in as much as.
I didn't realize that that was part of a, this was a subsection of. So I would draw my suggestion. Okay, any other comments? Alright, uh, on favor? Most? Next up is the resolution. Pursue property lease in Magic Springs, Colorado. Scott would remind you, not at all. It's taking twenty-three dash seven dash four. Resolution to pursue property lease in Magic Springs, Colorado, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Pike's Peak Library District, the district. Seems it desire, I'm sorry, deems it desirable and in the best interest of the library district to pursue potential long-term property lease with the city of Magic Springs. For the use of the Carnegie Building located at seven oh one Magic Avenue in the city of Magic Springs and County of El Paso, State of Colorado. Which is therefore referred to as the property. Now, therefore be it resolved that the, the chief librarian, CEO and the chief financial officer are hereby authorized, directed. And empowered to execute for and on behalf of the district and its, in its name, any and all documents required. Connection with the lease of the property in the now. Up to, we made a slight change. Does everybody know about slight change, everyone said. Okay, we're changing the amount from one point four to one point five.
Okay.
Um, and Eric can go into that after I finish reading it. Uh, resolve further that the chief librarian, CEO and/or the chief financial officer of the district are and each acting alone is hereby authorized to do. And perform any and all such acts, including execution of any and all documents and certificates. As they shall be necessary or advisable to carry out the purpose and intent of the foregoing resolutions. Resolve further that any actions taken by the chief librarian and CEO and/or the chief financial officer of the district prior to the date of the foregoing resolutions. Adopted here, hereby that are within the. With the authority conferred there. Confirmed thereby and hereby ratified, confirmed and approved as the acts and deemed deeds of this corporation. Beforegoing resolution was approved. Adopted this nineteen day of July, twenty twenty-three. So, well, I just John hand popped that. Do we have a separate? Uh, any discussion? Yeah, so, um, when we went into our discussions at the last work session, our intent was to, um. Match what city council had put in and in further discussions with the mayor, uh, city council put a one point five, I said one point four, so we just wanted to make sure that. We're authorizing up to one point five to, to match that.
Do we have any, uh? Difficulties with the art centers we're combined with now?
There is. There are some considerations around that, but we're, we decided at the work session, we're gonna handle that as a separate issue, um, and so we, we have a couple of different ways that we might be able to. To slice that orange. I just hope we're gonna end up doing, and so we wanna move forward with this so that they can break it down and start working on the Carnegie, and then we'll handle the, the great end with the back as a separate. Um, effort.
We have, anyone from. Want to see the council here tonight?
We have the city administrators here, we do not have city council.
Do you have any comments or any?
Ms. Howell, do you have anything you would like to say?
This is great, we are excited about. We did get the C D P G grant.
Can she come closer to the table, please? Can you get her closer to the table?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this is a great partnership, we're excited to about this. Um, we did get the C D P G grant, uh, was approved by the unions and now it's going to the hub. So we are continuing to work on it and I also had a direct conversation with the state historical society. Cause we got denied.
Cause we got denied the two hundred and fifty thousand, but it was this close, so we need to just make a couple of quick changes. And then we will put that in in October, and can still break ground. And then get the grant, so we're working on that right now to get those changes made, um, but yeah, this is a great opportunity, and I'm excited to break ground.
Great, thank you, we're excited about the partnership as well. Comments, questions? Right, say hi.
Hi.
Any votes? The last item on our agenda is the resolution to recognize Miss Libra's bad continued. Uh, during the governance report, so do we have some?
I knew you wanted to. Resolution and recognition of decision twenty-three dash seven dash twelve. Resolution and recognition of exemplary service of Mina Liebert to the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees. Whereas, the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees wishes to commend Mina Liebert for her exemplary service. As a Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees member. From February twenty-second, twenty eighteen to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, Mina's service on the Board of Trustees has included serving as the Vice President of the Board. In twenty twenty and serving on the Public Affairs Committee twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen through twenty-two as Chair. And whereas, Mina's personal ethics, compassion and leadership. Have made a significant, positive and long-lasting impact on the libraries, families and children within this community. And whereas, Mina's knowledge, attention to detail and insatiable curiosity. Have contributed to the continued success of the Pike's Peak Library District. And whereas, Mina's thoughtful questions, insights and involvement. Have significantly contributed to many library initiatives that improve the overall quality of life. For all citizens within the Pike's Peak region, and whereas, Mina Liebert has been an advocate for public libraries. Has consistently demonstrated the qualities of an exemplary board member. And has been a true friend to and champion of the staff and patrons of the Pike's Peak Library District. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees of Pike's Peak Library District. Does hereby recognize and sincerely thank Mina Liebert for her commitment, dedication and service. To this library district and to the community, and for the many enduring accomplishments achieved during her term.
Great, we have a second?
A second.
Any comments and discussion?
Just thank her for her work.
Yeah.
She could be here, so. But she is very, very busy.
Yeah, yes, she would probably prefer. So she is so busy.
All in favor? Any opposed? Right, motion carries? Uh, any other business that we need to conduct tonight? Alright, so we know.